Nine o'clock, if we would all stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of the flag and the Honorable Commissioner from District Four, Reed Bowman, with leaders in prayer.
Father, we come to you this morning, Lord, and we ask that you give us wisdom to be about the work of this county, Lord. We ask that you bless those who serve, Lord, and those who serve in harm's way, that we may be able to have this meeting this morning. Lord, those abroad, and, Lord, those local, our police and fire, and, Lord, our armed services that lay it on the line every day, that we may be safe. Lord, we ask that you give us the wisdom to do what you'd have us to do. Lord, we ask that you lead, guide, and direct us, that we would be what you would have us to be, Lord, and that it would be pleasing in your will. All these things I ask in Christ Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Our prayers raise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call a regular public meeting, Henry County Board of Commissioners, in order, nine a.m., Tuesday, February the 5th, at 2013. Do I have somebody to move, to accept the agenda, and I understand we may have some modifications?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda just to add that I have my appointment for the Library Board, and I'd like to add that to the agenda for District Two.
Where would be a good place to put that, in your mind?
I'm not ready, I'm there.
Okay. Do I hear any more amendments? Your Honor, from District Five, you had your hand up.
I was moving, but Brian.
Okay, so we have a motion by District Two, we have a second by District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. We have several proclamations. The first one, we have severe weather week, and I would ask that our communication director will read this after our other communication, emergency communication director gets through. If my voice breaks a little bit, I'm trying to keep from getting the crud that my grandkids and all this got, so, kind of like the flu, but I'm trying not to get it, but thank you so much. Don?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and the Board. As you know, this is for severe weather month, and we appreciate the opportunity to come before you. Severe weather continues to be the leading threat to our community. Throughout the month of February, our local emergency management agency will work to inform and educate our community about the threats of severe weather. As you see in front of you, the NOAA Weather Radio.
It's probably the most valuable tool a citizen can have in their home, to provide early advance warning for severe weather threats such as tornadoes. One of the goals of our agency is to educate our elementary kids to the threats and the preparedness for severe weather. The storms and tornadoes that affected North Georgia will remind us that we should continually be prepared for the risk of severe weather and such systems that move in unexpectedly. We will continue to work as an emergency management agency. We have two major projects going forth, increasing the number of tornado sirens in our community, as well as a reverse notification system that provides early warning to our citizens. I just wanted to inform you and update you on those projects as we move through this month. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Now presenting, Ms. Huber.
The first proclamation that we're going to present this morning is in recognition of Severe Weather Awareness Week for 2013. Whereas each year Georgians face the threat of severe weather events such as lightning, thunderstorms, floods, flash floods, hailstorms, tornadoes, and hurricanes, all potentially dangerous to life, health, and property; and whereas in recent years, Georgia has experienced record flooding, tornadoes, and wildfires, with urbanization and population growth increasing the potential for these storms to cause destruction; and whereas severe weather events in Georgia have killed at least 352 people, including two in 2012, injured countless others, and caused substantial property damage in Georgia; and whereas it is vital that the effective public education programs concerning severe weather systems and preparedness procedures continue for the benefit of all Georgians; and whereas Henry County Emergency Management Agency, other departments, and agencies of the local, state, and federal governments, along with volunteer and professional associations, the private sector, elected leaders, and news media, are committed to informing Georgia citizens about safety and severe weather preparedness procedures, so that they may better protect themselves, their families, and their neighbors. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that Henry County recognizes the week of February 4th through the 8th, 2013, as Severe Weather Awareness Week in Georgia, and we encourage our citizens to become more aware of severe weather safety measures and to participate in the various awareness programs scheduled during the week. This fifth day of February, 2013, Henry County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you so much. I think it'd be appropriate to get a picture with Don Ash and anybody you have in your department that's with you. the Republic of Georgia. Welcome to Henry County. We're glad to have you, and we're glad that our site was selected by y'all out of the whole United States. You selected us, and I attribute that to Michael Turner, who at one time worked with us and helped build what you see today. So having said that, I will yield the floor to the distinguished communication service.
Just a brief introduction, sir, Mr. Chairman. Again, we're fortunate to have a delegation from the Republic of Georgia. I believe this is our second group from the Republic of Georgia, as well as this is our sixth international group that has come here to visit with Henry County, not just emergency management, but the entire public safety team. So that is a testament for the work and the support we get from y'all. So with that, I just pass it over to Julie. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Ms. Huber, Erich, will now read the proclamation.
And we will translate this into Georgian, one paragraph at a time. A proclamation in honor of our guests from the Republic of Georgia. Whereas the Republic of Georgia, which gained its independence from the Soviet Union in 1991, is an emerging democracy with a population of over 4.5 million people, and is committed to reforming the Ministry of Internal Affairs and the National Police Force, which is comprised of 27,000 officers, to reflect international best practices and community policing. And whereas the U.S. Department of State's Bureau of International Narcotics and Law Enforcement Affairs and the U.S. Embassy in Tbilisi, Georgia endeavor to assist law enforcement in the Republic of Georgia as they seek to improve law enforcement competencies and response to emergencies through a long-term criminal justice development program, which began in 2003. enforcement from the state of Georgia to their counterparts in the Republic of Georgia for training, mentoring, and development purposes. And whereas through this program, Henry County has assisted the Republic of Georgia since 2010 by hosting two delegations and sharing best practices in areas of emergency communications, emergency management, police operations, and human resource development. And the Republic of Georgia in turn used the information gathered in Henry County to form the basis of the first operational central emergency communication system in the former Soviet Union. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that we recognize the Republic of Georgia's desire to improve safety for their citizens and enhance law enforcement, and welcome them to Henry County in their quest for knowledge and information. Be it further proclaimed that we appreciate the members of our police, fire, and emergency communications personnel for their invaluable contributions to professional emergency response development, and for consistently maintaining such high standards that Henry County has become a role model from which others can learn and excel in their own communities.
If we could come up here and get a photo, and I would ask that all of public safety people come back up here, please. Moving right along, Public Safety, resolution request and approval of the Performance Partnership Agreement with Jima, Don Ash.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board members. The Performance Partnership Agreement is a funding that comes through Georgia Emergency Management through FEMA, and the requirement is that I must maintain my certification as a certified emergency manager and our agency as a qualified emergency management agency. The funds have increased over the years after the last census. I believe we went from $35,000 to $61,177. These funds are used for the operational and support of our emergency management agency. This is direct funding with no match from Jima or any match from the county.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Ash? Somebody move that we adopt a resolution pertaining to this issue?
Somebody.
Have a motion from District Two, have a second from District Five? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Next, we have a resolution request and approval of the contract with Piedmont Henry Hospital for Medical Supplies and Pharmaceutical for the Fat Department, Vision Chief Brad Johnson.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. The next two items are kind of related to each other in relation to our EMS license we must maintain yearly. The first was a contract between the Henry County and Piedmont Henry Hospital, which we get our pharmaceutical supplies and some medical supplies, asking to proceed forward, permission to proceed forward for the county to enter the contract or continue the contract with Henry Medical Center so we can purchase pharmaceutical supplies.
Anybody have any questions? Before we move, I think unless it's been changed in the resolution listed under item two, I made a pen and ink change here at the bottom. It says unauthorized, all related documents be authorized for the chair to sign it. Is that only, has that been added to the original document?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the document that you have is correct. If not, it will have that language to authorize the chair to execute the required documents. Does somebody move in that direction? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I just would like to ask one question.
Yes.
Having had a couple of hospital stays here recently in the past eight or nine months, I see where, you know, an aspirin costs you $50.
Yes, sir.
Are we looking, are you currently looking to make sure that whatever we're paying for these supplies are the right rate, not the hospital rate?
It is fair market value. It is. We were in contract with Henry Medical Center for medical supplies. We now do our own medical supplies where we actually get the best price and price out. Pharmaceutical supplies are a little different. They are doing fair market value at their price for pharmaceutical, but by state law, we can only purchase our pharmacy meds from one pharmacy, and that was kind of a regulation control for emergency medical services, not to go out and shop, get multiple drugs from multiple places. So we're kind of bound to a contract with them for a pharmaceutical or one organization, but they are fair market value. They're very fair pricing.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Anybody move that, before we go into further discussions, anybody move that we approve the resolution pertaining to this issue as published?
Are we the sole provider of ambulance services for Piedmont Henry?
Not for Piedmont Henry, for Henry County. We own the EMS license for the state of Georgia, for the West Georgia region EMS council, to provide 911 service for Henry County, for the 911 service. Henry Medical Center, or Henry Piedmont, they do contract for their services out of the hospital, to take from hospital-to-hospital services, but we are the only, we have no contract with Henry Medical Center, but they are basically our primary position, our receiving facility. Now if we pick you up and you want to go to Southern Regional Atlanta Medical, we will take you directly to your hospital of choice, being if the patient's stable enough to go there.
Do they have similar agreements with other ambulance services?
I'm not sure. I think we're the only ones that provide pharmaceutical supplies and medical supplies too.
Somebody move we adopt the resolution as published? Have a motion from District Five, second District Two, any further discussion or questions? All in favor of the motion, indicate whether up lift of your right hand. Next, resolution request and approval of the annual EMA license payment. Presenter is standing.
Mr. Chairman.
Chief Johnson.
This is part two of resolutions. We must have the pharmacy agreement for our license that we renew every year. The state of Georgia requires an annual fee for EMS services. Our fee is $26,300, and it's based on how many ambulances you have at a base plus ambulance, base charge plus ambulance. So requesting now permission to go forward with the check to pay our yearly EMS fee to the state of Georgia, an amount of $26,300.
Is this a budget item?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. Is it encumbered?
It is encumbered in the budget.
Okay. Does somebody move that we adopt this resolution?
I move.
Have a motion from District One, we have a second.
Sir.
Have a second from District Three. Any further discussions? Any questions? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know what you're showing, but item D has been postponed and will be heard on February the 19th.
Good morning.
Okay. Next, the resolution request and authorization to accept a grant from the Criminal Justice Coordination Council to fund the Violence Against Women Project Kimbley Monus.
Good morning, welcome, new commissioners. Mr. Chair, this is the fourth year of the Violence Against Women Grant that we accept. It's actually from the Office of Violence Against Women, which is a federal grant, but it is accepted through the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, which is a state coordinating pass-through agency. It is in the amount of $246,833, which 61,708 of that is an in-kind slash cash match. And what I mean by that is, it is something that we already pay for, but it is something that is used, it is salaries. So our match is met in existing salaries that we dedicate specifically to violence against women cases. And in this case, it is a detective salary portion and a sergeant salary portion. So this is our fourth year of this grant. We have had three years behind us, the same amount of funding is accepted every year. This will be the final year of this particular grant, and we will go back into the regular pool of potential funding for the fall. This grant begins January 1, and with your acceptance, is, will be back done until December the 31st. It does pay existing salaries in terms of our match, but it pays 100% of a liaison position and some, two other detectives, an enormous amount of travel and training for the six stakeholders. Our stakeholders are the Southern Crescent Sexual Assault Center, which is not a county agency, but they are necessary for this grant, as is the Haven House, because it is sexual assault and domestic violence. The four county agencies that benefit from this grant are the Police Department primarily as the fiscal agent, as well as the solicitor, the district attorney's office, and the court system. Those persons derive training, and extensive training from this, and be part of our partnership. So this is the fourth year of this grant, and we will apply again in the fall. I will apply again. There will be existing funding through the federal budget for this. We do not know what the amount is going to be going forward, but the amount is the same for a four-year period. So we will apply for another four years in the fall. This is the final. So I'm asking you to accept this in the amount of $246,833 for year four. No questions?
The only question I have, you know, I'm going to ask is, the $61,708, is that in the budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's the only question I have.
Yes, sir.
Somebody move to approve the resolution referencing this issue?
We approve.
We have a motion from District Four. We have a second from District Five. Any further discussion?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, will the next phase be, is it competitive?
Yes, sir. This was a competitive, yes, sir. The original four years of this was competitive, and the, but once you establish yourself, you will get that remaining funding every four years. The next one will also be competitive. We have an extremely good relationship with the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, and with this particular grant, we have become a best practices and a state agency. I do not anticipate us not being granted funding going forward. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Next, we move down to Transit, a resolution request and approval to apply for the 5311 Rural Transportation Capital Assistance Program. David Williams is the Transit Director.
Good morning.
You have nice buses.
Sir?
I said you have nice buses. I wrote one last week.
Yes, you did. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
GDOT, just as a matter of information, GDOT replaces their buses every five years or 100,000 miles, so they keep us, keep our buses in.
Yeah, y'all put me in a new one, I suppose.
We tried to. But GDOT is recommending four buses be surplus and then the acceptance of four additional new buses. As I was saying, this is done every 100,000 miles or 500 years, whichever comes first in the cycle. This contract is for four buses totaling $180,440. Request approval, please.
Anybody have any questions? Since it says it's no local match, I will not ask if it's in the budget.
Correct.
Thank you. Anybody have a question? Does somebody move in this direction to approve the resolution pertaining to this We have a motion from District Four, a second from District One. Any further discussion or question? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. So move.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a resolution request and approval of a funding change regarding Resolution 12-240 for the Henry County Resource Court. Presenter be Kelly Bush, Court Financial Administrator. Exhibit seven.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. Originally, I brought this resolution before y'all on November the 19th. It was Resolution Number 12240, and the resolution itself hasn't changed. It was to accept funding through CJCC for our resource court. And in the executive summary that was attached to that resolution, I had inadvertently stated that it would be for $11,215 of a current case manager, when in fact, it was $11,215 for a new part-time case manager. The resolution that you have before you just clarifies that it is for a part-time case manager. It also clarifies that this is 100% grant-funded, and should we not in future receive the grant funds, the position would be eliminated.
Anybody have any questions? The only comment I have is, will y'all take applications for this job?
Yes, sir.
I would like to include maybe some of the people of the 57, even those part-time, because once, as I understand it, when the funds expire, then the position goes with it, so obviously, it would be, it would be short-lived. That, I know that, we have some people that got laid off, that some people that got laid off, that at one time, one was a director of a department that had some experience in administering this. And I would like to add that, number one, if we could do something in-house, limited in-house, and add the, not, but allow, or put notice to the 57, some that hadn't found jobs, and let them know that we are taking applications. If that would be a possibility.
That would be, but we really don't expect it to be a limited-time position. The governor is a very big proponent of accountability courts, and we anticipate this funding to continue on. And we're also doing our drug screen lab in the hopes of raising some funds to continue to put money into these courts.
You're talking about it would be fully funded, hopefully, beyond that.
Forever.
By other.
Forever would be our hope.
Okay. That's the only question I have. Anybody have any comments or question? If not, does somebody move we approve this resolution as published?
We approve.
Have a motion from District Two. I hear a second.
Second.
Have a second from District Three. Any further questions or comments? All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning zoning, resolution request approval of the CB, correction, CDBG Public Facility Agreement template. Michael Harris is the presenter.
Good morning, Chairman, good morning, board members. Back on June 18, 2012, the Board of Commissioners approved a five-year consolidated plan for our community development block grant allocation. That was an allocation that we were made eligible for based on our population from the 2010 census. Since that time, we have moved forward with, we hired a consultant, Mullen and Lonergan at the time, to kind of help guide us through the process, since we're a first-time recipient. And they've helped us to identify and prioritize our needs. From there, we came back to the board with a list of potential projects and organizations and funding, ways to fund and make allocations of those funding, the funding source. And the board voted at that time to prioritize, to identify the organizations they wanted to allocate the funding to. Since that time, we have hired on Ms. Shannon Buckner, who is serving as our community development block grant coordinator. And she immediately hit the ground running, working with the board-selected subrecipients to identify and sit down and craft the subrecipient agreements. And what she's bringing forward this morning is some of those agreements. Now, I'll let her take it from there.
Good morning. The HUD CDBG Regulations 24 CFR 570.503 requires that grantees, being Henry County government, have written agreements in effect for each subrecipient before reimbursing any of the CDBG funds. Those written agreements must remain in effect during any period in which the subrecipient has control over any CDBG funds, and this does include program income. The subrecipient agreements will govern the funding and activities of subrecipients, as well as fulfilling a legal requirement by representing a concise statement of the rules of the CDBG program and the conditions under which funds will be provided, and also provides a yardstick for the monitoring of those subrecipients and their performance, as well as an essential vehicle for the training of subrecipient staff on the operations of the CDBG program. The first subrecipient template, agreement template, is for the public facility agreement. This template is being proposed for the subrecipients as approved in the FY12 Annual Action Plan, being the city of Locust Grove for a elevator, infrastructure improvement. This area has not yet been determined as far as a target area, but also helping in his name the food pantry.
Yeah, this time, I was asking board's approval on the template itself, as well as the noted subrecipient agreement, with the understanding that going forward, we're asking for authorization from the chair to be able to sign any, because this isn't all of them. We're trying to get, as they come in, as we get the subrecipient agreement contracts back from the, from the subrecipients, we're trying to process them as quickly as we can so we can move forward in the process of doing the allocations.
These, this agreement, is it for 2012 to 2013, or is it for 13 and 14?
2012.
What about the organizations that were identified under the five-year plan, but not, you know, they didn't get anything allocated to them? Are they going to be signing these agreements as well?
Only the subrecipients that were funded in the 2012 Annual Action Plan will be under agreement with the county. In the future, as we request proposals or applications from other agencies, should they choose to apply and be selected by the Board of Commissioners and then approved in the future Annual Action Plan, perhaps 2013, then at that point, we would sign an agreement with those subrecipients.
Last question. If these organizations have already been funded, why are we going back 2012, 2013 to implement these agreements?
In actuality, no subrecipients have received funding directly to date. They have only received a verbal or written commitment of funding, but no subrecipients have been reimbursed for their expenditures to date.
Haven't we received the funding from the federal government?
The CDBG program is a reimbursable program. The county has taken on some expenditures to this date. None of those expenditures have gone to repay subrecipients, however.
Yeah, we've had to go through the process of actually setting up the drawdown. It's a IDIS, the acronym that's used. We've had to work, been working closely with our local HUD office, as well as the federal HUD office, to get set up. In fact, we just recently, within the last two weeks, actually received access onto the system. It was some challenges innate with being an initial subrecipient, but working closely with them with the course of the last few months, and also working in conjunction with the subrecipients to craft the agreements and get them in place and get their scope of services that they're going to be proposing.
So, anybody that receives an allocation this year, they won't, they won't receive anything until next year? Is that what you're saying?
As far as 2013?
Yes.
In the future, we do hope the process to run much smoother. With 2013, we won't have the delays that we've had in 2012 with getting things set up into the IDIS system. With that being said, we do hope to be able to initiate contracts with 2013 subrecipients sooner than what we've done to date. However, in the future, I would propose that the county does wait until it receives its obligation to funding from HUD before signing any subrecipient agreements, as funding from HUD could change from what has been awarded to the county in 2012.
Thank you. Yes?
I just want to add on to Commissioner Holmes, because last year, it was, the community block grant was, it was a little chaotic, because as most things are in the first year. And one, and this really pertains more to the public service side of things, is that we had a lot of organizations that approached us for the money. And what I had talked to Mr. Harris about was, we have clearinghouse organizations in Henry County. For instance, we had the Economics and Education Task Force that has all the stakeholders who are involved in the county for early childhood intervention, as well as with the school systems, both public and private. And I was going to see, because it's such a hard task, and this is such an important task for the community, that to bring this all to the county commissioners and expect us to be the most efficient, you know, on how to allocate these resources when we already have organizations and, you know, and community stakeholders who've already sorted out what's the best use of these resources. So, I talked to Mr. Harris, and I just want to make sure that, you know, because we have new commissioners, is that something else talked about? Is going through some of the spin-off task force so that we can make sure that we're allocating those early childhood resources as efficiently as possible?
Yes, Commissioner, great point. We, we've had those conversations, particularly as it relates to how we're going to go about selecting subrecipients in the future. What we've talked about is perhaps forming a committee from board appointments to make sure that we do capture, you know, those like-minded organizations, so they can all come together and give their, give their input. Because this year, it was really kind of left to the staff, because we're fighting, we're backed up on some difficult timelines and timeframes. So, going forward in the future, we're trying to structure a, an application process that would involve, you know, far more input from the community, and perhaps even, again, we've, in other jurisdictions, we know that we, they utilize kind of a citizens' committee to come together and kind of help identify programs and organizations.
So, y'all are going to use the spin-off task force from Economics and Education to help out with some of that?
That would certainly be one we'd want to reach out to. I mean, that's, they've been instrumental in what they've done here in the county so far, so.
Anybody else have any questions? The only comment that I would have, in the resolution itself, it obviously resolves that the chair is authorized to sign agreements as they pertain to all of the subrecipients and all that. There are many agreements, affidavits required. And whether it be incorporated in this resolution or not, or just verbally stated, I would like that the chair be authorized to execute these agreements after the approval asked to form from the county attorney. Would that be appropriate to add to this, or would that be, or just a verbal? But I know on the forms, it has a place for her signature.
For the county attorney.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
But some of the affidavits, which doesn't pertain to the chair's signature, it pertains to vendors and people of that nature. But it's, I just want to make sure that everybody knows, I will not sign anything until it approved as form from the county attorney.
That's correct. Yeah. And every subrecipient is a good point, is, we request that the county attorney review and sign off on before it's.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Somebody move we approve the resolution as published?
Can we combine A, B, and C, since they're, or do we need to talk, are y'all planning on talking about each one independently?
We're comfortable with you all combining them.
That's right.
I feel comfortable combining it, because it's, you get one, you get them all.
I'm going to make a motion to move to approve Exhibits, Items Nine, A, B, and C.
We have a second. We have a motion by District Two. We have a second by District Five. Any further discussions or questions? Let me, let me get the flick on which one you say, A, B, C, D, and what?
No, you say A, B, and C.
Okay.
D is something totally different.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, which one you're going to present now?
I am, actually, Item D. This is, yeah, we're, Item A, B, and C was handling the CDBG. Item D is a completely.
Resolution request acceptance to the final plat for Annabird Phase One. Give us a, we just digest summary.
Yes, sir. I think I can do that.
Because you could sit here and talk three or four days on this, but just, just give us enough where the board can check the facts, and then the audience will know exactly what we're doing.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Over the past six years, county staff has been charged with the responsibility of thoroughly reviewing each and every final plat that comes in, that's received, to ensure that we comply with all local, state, federal regulations, and any applicable conditions that may, that may be imposed. Staff recently received a final plat for the Annabird Phase One, and proceeded in the exact same manner we have over the past number of years. Just a brief history about this particular plat. It was rezoned in August of 2005. Variance was issued in January of 2006. A modification was issued in November of 2011, and a development agreement was approved in September of 2012. Several conditions were noted in that development agreement, and working with staff, our DOT, our building department, environmental compliance and plan review, planning and zoning, those conditions have been met. One of the principal conditions noted in the development agreement was to ensure clear title. As many of you may already know, this particular piece of property has changed hands a number of times, and it was, it was, it got somewhat convoluted as far as the process, as far as trailing back on the ownership. There's also a provision within our ULDC that states, as relates to public, the acquisition of public property, principally for parks and fire stations, but also notes in right-of-way as well, that that should receive board acceptance. In an abundance of caution, staff working with the applicant felt it was appropriate to come forward and go ahead and seek board acceptance for this final plat. However, the staff will be coming back in a couple of weeks to clarify that process, final plat process. But I do want to just make sure I clarify the point that this action, today, if it's the board's desire to accept this plat, in no way does it amend any of the current conditions imposed on this development. It has no impact on the zoning. It does not, it doesn't modify any current conditions whatsoever. It's simply a acceptance, an approval of the final plat as it currently stands, based on that development agreement. And just, apologize for the small size, but the exhibit you have in your, in your handout, it calls out, again, back as relates to the, the right-of-way for this particular property. We wanted to be, we wanted to be sure that we had right-of-way, obviously, the final plat itself will address the right-of-way within the subdivision itself, the area shown in yellow, and the area in red, it was determined that that area had already been previously deeded to the county back in 2005. And there's also another small area between those two. Wanted to make sure. We went through the whole process of having a title search done. It's been reviewed by our staff, as well as their applicants, to ensure that we do, in fact, that they do have, we do, in fact, have clean and clear title back from the right-of-way of Foster Drive all the way to the entrance on this particular subdivision. So, you know, I share with some of you, this has probably been the most scrutinized final plat we've ever had since, in my time being here. But again, what we're asking for at this time is just acceptance of the final plat. And the applicant is here, if you have any specific questions for them as well.
Okay, the revised Exhibit 11 is the one that's on the table now. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Could you explain again, for my benefit, at the end of it, about the $20,760.04 in the first resolve, and then the 77, 741.58 in the second resolve? I must miss that.
Mr. Harris, my name?
Yes, please.
My, um, originally, these, the roads in this particular subdivision, when it was rezoned under a prior owner, the roads were going to be private roads. And sometime in 2011, the former board approved an action to allow these roads to be dedicated to the county. And at that time, our Public Works Division Director, Mr. McNichol, halted the process, and he wanted to condition the acceptance of those private roads that were going to be public on certifications that there were no liens or other superior interests that would impact the county's ability to own the roads free and clear of someone else, since they were private roads initially. So, in that process, we had title searches done, and working with the current developer, we got title policies, title commitment policies to ensure that if there was anything that was ever to arise.
The developer pays?
He paid, they paid for the title policy. The county did, the county is the beneficiary of that title policy, and it gives the county clear and clean title to the property.
Okay. And the same as that is the same?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else got any questions? Anybody got any discussion? If not, does somebody move to adopt the revised resolution pertaining to this?
I'd like to motion accept final plat down for Phase One.
We have a motion. We have a second. We have a motion from District Three, second from District One. All in favor, raise your right hand. So move.
Thank you.
Thank you. Finance Resolution Questions and Amendment to the Fiscal Year 2013 Budget, Mike Bush and Andrew Sora.
Angie and I are going to tag team this thing. Uh, the, each year, we come before the board, usually in February, to, to update the board on our mid-year progress for this year's budget, um, and that's what we're here doing today. We have two different resolutions. One is on the general fund, and one is for the airport, and we'll do the general fund first. Let's see, that's the airport. There are three different sets of numbers, um, that we did this time. The very first set of numbers is, uh, where we were, where the board actually came in and adopted a millage rate of fourteen point five mils, which was an increase of two point seven five mils, which generated four hundred, four million, six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars, um, that went back into the budget, which allowed us to reduce the fund balance originally adopted of four million dollars to, by three million, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, twelve dollars. And, uh, we also had the, uh, reduction of a commission from the Water Authority who originally budgeted a two million, uh, two hundred thousand dollars, and there was an intergovernmental agreement between the Water Authority and the county for a hundred thousand dollars, so we reduced that, uh, also in this first, uh, page of the, of the, uh, budget amendment. Then we had, uh, let's see, I'll show you this too. Originally, we had a four million dollar use of fund out, and then after the board adopted option three B for the millage rate, we reduced it down to eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, and that's how we came up with those numbers. And then there was also these additional reductions on the bottom, which we're fixing to talk about now. Second set of numbers, uh, allowed the county, that's a bunch of them, to eliminate the four furlough days from the budget, and that is, each one of, each department has numbers on these eight pages, I think it's, yeah, eight pages. For example, ten, ten, five, eleven, that would be the Board of Commissioners, uh, ten, eleven, five, eleven, that's the county clerk, would be different, but adding back the cost of the four furlough days, and that's what the majority of this page does. We eliminated the four furlough days for each employee. We provided the clerk of Superior Court with two new additional clerk positions, provided the tax assessor's office with two additional appraisers, and placed a budget for the Department of Transportation for Grass Cutting. Originally, we were looking at outsourcing the grass cutting for DOT and decided that that did not work for us at this time, so we went back in and put back in money in the budget to help take care of that. To also help in this situation, there were some other offsetting expenses. We eliminated a BOC consulting contract that was for forty-five thousand dollars, and there was a reduction of the BOC salaries as well. That kind of makes up the expenditures that match up with the one point four million dollar revenue, uh, slide. The next set of numbers, um, if we'll look at this, uh, sheet here, um, we have omitted number two on this section of numbers, um, and so if you go down by the numbers, you'll see on mine it says two, has nothing on it. I think yours may actually have something on number two, but we've omitted that from, but theirs are clean, ours are clean too. Uh, one of the, the very first thing on the top here we're doing is transferring three maintenance technician positions to the sheriff's budget. They're technically in Mike Keeble's budget, but they work one hundred percent of the time at the jail, and they're the ones who supervise and see what's going on, so it just made sense, and the sheriff and Mr. Keeble have agreed that that makes sense to them too. So all three positions will be transferred from the, uh, building maintenance budget to the sheriff's budget. The number three on that list, uh, we recently just approved that walk-in freezer, I believe it was the last night meeting we had, for senior services, and that, uh, money came from, uh, our contingency account, um, and number four is additional three thousand dollars being requested from the juvenile court program to also use three thousand dollars of the contingency amount, which would leave us with eighty thousand, five hundred dollars in the contingency account. We had a hundred thousand to begin with. The number, the next one is probably, uh, number six, um, at the beginning of the year, the finance department, uh, realized that there were some additional requirements that were going to be placed on us or, or coming down on us, so we have been working on this for a little over a year, maybe, maybe more than a year, uh, to look at doing some types of consolidations in different departments. The main issue was the payroll issue that was coming on us, and a lot of people in these departments, they do payroll and AP. They, they combine those job functions. So what we did is we decided we would try to re-centralize the AP and the payroll situations so that we could get better efficiencies in, in doing so. And doing that, we were able to, um, uh, for payroll centralization, every department has a contact with the finance department to answer any questions directly. It's one person, it's not call and, and answer whoever you get. All time sheets, leave forms, and payroll rosters are maintained within finance. Entry is complete by two payroll coordinators in finance, allowing for the accountant sufficient time to process the adjustments and garnishments, and call child support recovery for termination employees. We've, we've received a lot of, uh, additional court documents that require additional work on our part, and we've basically eliminated, we've just eliminated, and, and the fifty-seven that Commissioner, or the Chairman, uh, Smith had just mentioned, we had a reduction of a payroll person at that time, and with the additional stuff coming in, it was very difficult to maintain and make all those phone calls and still process payroll within the time, within the time limit, because we only had one person in payroll. Same thing with AP, that was, they kind of tie together, so we did the same thing in AP. We actually lost, when we had that reduction, we also lost a grant position and had to move one of our AP technicians into that grant position, which reduced our people in AP to one, and this way, we were able to have everybody, again, coordinate through AP and, uh, make the functions work better. We were able to do all this at zero additional cost to the county. We just consolidated some people, made sure that recreation, senior services, and SPOSS were still able to function and do their jobs without that person technically sitting in, in their departments. Um, I think that's all on that one. Then we had one additional, uh, update on, uh, this one is, um, a lot of ins and outs. It's got, there are contributions to the juvenile court program from a different fund into the general fund to make sure some of these, uh, programs they have going are paid for. Recreation Department had donations to, um, print the recreation calendars. I think this is the second year in a row that that has cost the county nothing, that they had donations to do such. Same thing with animal control, have people donating money to help with the microchips, um, for adoption of pets. The transit building that we've just recently opened up here, um, had a lot of expenditures, but it had a reimbursable grant that basically paid for the whole thing. And then also, we are finalizing or closed out the energy efficiency grant, which wound up giving Henry County seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of improvements at no additional cost to the county. So that's kind of what makes up the mid-year budget amendment for the general fund. There are other, there are accounts within the general fund that have, um, expenditures that may be over fifty percent of the year at this point, but they're also one-time expenditures. This is mainly to fix the bigger items that were out there that needed to be fixed. We will come back at the end of the year and adjust the budgets to the final budgets, um, like we always do, and we'll take any questions.
I only have one question, and I'm going to, uh, address this to the, uh, county manager. On the approval sheet for the agenda item, you indicated that your comments was to see attached comments on each sheet. Now, is that, that wasn't on our sheet, right? Is that?
I, I had passed, I had passed those on to the, uh, finance director and, uh, passed along to the, uh, budget, uh, director to, uh, review, and rather than cobble up, uh, all the paperwork here, they weren't included. But many of the things that, um, they've covered were basically incorporated into their write-ups here.
So what you're saying, explanation of expenditures is, is what you commented on, is that, is that what we're saying?
We have a lot of format questions on the way we answered the questions, so we re-answered the questions, provided that back to him.
Okay, so, so what you've done, you just clarified how we was going to receive it?
Yes, when I originally received it, some of, yeah, some of the language that was, the way it was written and whatever, I felt needed for clarification, made suggestions, they went back, changed it, so rather than incorporate what it used to look like versus to what they changed the two to, to read, as I feel was more fluent, that's what's in here only, is to, to avoid having to look at that as well, yes.
Okay, the bottom line is, there's no overall cost increase or decrease due to this amendment. Is that still a true statement?
We still have a balanced budget, yes, sir.
Somebody move that we adopt the budget resolution?
Excuse me, excuse me, Chairman?
For a general fund one hundred and...
We have a balanced budget, but our budget did increase. Our original budget was a hundred and sixteen, some, hundred and fifteen?
We're increasing the general fund budget by a million, four oh one, two seventy-two, based on the, um, adoption of the millage rate.
Yeah, but I'm saying, this, this, this is associated resolution, it's not airport resolution.
No, that's a separate resolution.
Gotcha, budget, right. Somebody move in that direction? We have a motion by District Two. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by District Five. Any further questions or comments? All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you so much. Now, we move to the, uh, the airport, uh, budget.
Yes, sir. When we purchased the airport in August, um, of two thousand and eleven, um, we had only, we took over operations, I believe, October first of two thousand and eleven, so we had, uh, a couple of months there that Clayton County was basically operating the airport as we were preparing to get, to, to do that. So we did not do a mid-year budget amendment last year on the airport, because we didn't have the two or three months' worth of activity to look at. This year, we've actually got a little bit more activity to look at, and we decided that we should come in there and do it, especially because, um, when we originally started this year's budget, we received a, uh, a grant from the FAA and GDOT for a little over three million dollars, and, um, so we had already had some of the expenditures come through, and this was a reimbursable grant, and so we had, uh, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars worth of expenses that were going to be reimbursed by GDOT, and the reimbursement or revenue had not been booked at the time that we were looking at this originally, and it showed us having a, a, a loss on the airport for this year, so we thought we'd better come in here and, and correct all this stuff. So if you look at number one, two, and three, um, on this sheet, it's got GDOT of eighteen thousand, nine seventy-three, um, FAA of three forty-one, five fifteen, and local of the same eighteen, nine seventy-three. This grant is a ninety percent reimbursable grant from GDOT and a five percent from, I'm sorry, ninety percent from FAA, five percent from GDOT, and five percent local match on these expenditures. So what we have is, we went in there and booked the revenues to offset number seven, which is the three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar expenses that we currently have. We also moved that to the top of the, um, profit and loss sheet so that we can track the capital items at the top of the sheet and the operational items of the airport at the bottom of the sheet. And the rest of this stuff is a bunch of, um, ins and outs, where we had, we had copying and, uh, printing and copying, where we had people come out there and bid on doing some of this work, and they were, they paid for the copies of the plans and plats and things like that. We have reduced, um, sale of jet fuel and sale of aviation fuel for the, um, for the year, based on, we're going to go into some construction in the second half of this year, and we're, we are going to probably have some downtime at the airport, so we reduced the, uh, estimated collections or, yeah, collections on the revenues. We did the same thing for, um, for access fees and fuel flow fees. We, we were able to increase our miscellaneous revenues by a little over seven thousand dollars, um, and that was to fix up till mid-year. If there's any other additional miscellaneous revenues, we will come back with another amendment for that reason. Then if you go down to the expenses, originally, we budgeted almost two hundred thousand dollars worth of salaries in this airport, and we have, we currently have two full-time employees and one, uh, part-time employee working at the, um, airports. We were able to move some of the expenses around to where there were, for example, I think gas and oil originally did not have a budget for vehicles. It had one for airplanes, but not one for vehicles, so we moved some money around to clean up these accounts to show a budget for the full year. And in doing so, we basically increased the budget from nine hundred and forty-one thousand to, um, a little over a million dollars, um, uh, but we increased it by a hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars overall, so our budget's a little over a million dollars for the airport. With the operations of the airport, I think at the end of the first six months, had a, a net income, and with, with our adjustments, with the thought process of the airport may be having some downtime in the second half of the year, it looks like we're going to make, generate a net loss in the second half, but end up with a net, with a basically break-even budget, and that's what this is. And I'll discuss any of these items you see on here that you want to, to discuss, if there are any.
Yes, sir.
Mike, the question I have is just, and just to get clarification, items four and five, you got the sale of jet fuel and the sale of aviation fuel. If you add those two together, it's about two hundred and fifteen thousand, but then I noticed down here under item sixteen, it's one seventy-one, kind of going the opposite way, so are we, to net those two out is really the, the loss of sale of fuel over that two month period?
There was a, I, I guess, a margin, a gross margin that we, we make, we make buy the gas at three dollars, sell it for three dollars and a quarter. We reduced the sell by the three dollars and a quarter and the purchase by three dollars, so yes, you're correct. That's, that's why it doesn't net out the same, I think.
For clarification, I guess, to your question, it, basically, the second, one seventy, is the expenditure cost of sales? The above that you're referencing, the two fifteen, are the sales. We're reducing sales, we're reducing cost of sales, and the net, as you said, is the gross margin we're going to lose from the less, lesser amount of sales that we're budgeting for the full year.
So you're not losing two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars worth of fuel sales, you're really losing the net effect of forty-five thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Yes, sir. As, as Mike said, the, this basically, what we did is, we took the actual results for the first six months. We did a month-to-month-to-month budget for the last six months of the year, and basically, as a result, said, here's the new ending twelve-month sales and expenditures, and the end result is, these are the, the moves, if you would, between the accounts to say this is what the budget, uh, should represent on an actual six and a, and a forecasted six months, and that's what these adjustments, uh, do. And it's still, as, as Mike said, is, first half, first six months, we've made a profit over forty grand. Last half, we're expecting to lose forty. We do believe we can make less than what we're budgeting, but conservatively, we're budgeting break-even, as was originally the case, and therefore, the last half of the year, if we end up with better sales than we reduced it by, or rentals, uh, our biggest problem is the last two months of this year, May and June. We'll be practically shut down because of the expansion, uh, of the runway for safety reasons, that we will not be able to possibly have, uh, planes flying in and out, and we'll lose gas sales and possibly rental income to work, accounting for it accordingly, and hoping that we end up with better.
One more question. The other question I have is, um, this kind of piggybacks is not necessarily on this agenda item, is, but I've had several people in the community contact me, because we are shutting down for the construction for a few months, what's, I mean, is there any way to, to expedite that construction process? Because I know it really, I mean, double shifts, triple shifts. I know when I was on the school board, so, we, we had one school, Timberidge, that we had to accelerate the construction because of need, and we were able to get the vendor to do that. Is there any plans to try to accelerate so that we don't cause problems and hinder the, those people who, who count on the airport?
The big, the big issue is not the, the expansion, the thousand foot, it's the widening of twenty-five feet, and what that is, is twelve and a half feet on each side. So the contractor and, and our people are working together with Croy and everybody else to set out today how that's going to be done to minimize during that period of time, May and June, so that we don't have that problem of shutting down that long period of time. They're also conducting, um, every other week meetings with the tenants out there to keep them posted. They've also posted, uh, the schedule of what it appears that we'll be able to work through for the next four months with a two-week update that, you know, as things change for weather or whatever the case may be, to keep the tenants informed, as well as other persons that are flying in or attempting to fly, wanting to fly in. So it's, it's a, it depends on the weather, it depends on a lot of other things, but the, as far as spending more money or trying to accelerate at other costs, uh, the contract's been approved based on the method by which they're, to do it, and so it's a matter of their efficiencies of trying to get those two and a half feet on each side done safely, quickly, and allow the airport to reopen up.
Okay. Yes, sir.
And because it's related to my industry, accelerated cost.
And because it's related to my industry, accelerated cost sometimes does not equate into a savings. There, it, there's a lot of variables in there, and so I'd be very careful, you know, about doing that. I know, I know what happened at Timberbridge, I have a lot of pictures of that school. So, but at the end of the day, that, you need to tread lightly sometimes when you go into that, because you can spend more money in acceleration than what you end up saving at end result.
I have a question. In the DR amount, which that's expended to us, if you look at line, if you look at item four, it has jet fuel at a hundred and twelve thousand, two forty-two. Then it has aviation fuel, which I would think that would be for prop airplanes, it's ninety-two, three hundred. So then you come down to the item sixteen that District Two meant, we only took in a hundred and seventy thousand, nine ninety-six, and it just says, it doesn't separate, it says the sale of fuel. So what that means, and, and what he, we indicate that we, we lost thirty-four thousand dollars, is that?
About forty-five thousand dollars.
Forty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Well, if you add those two, I mean, it's, it's going to be about two hundred and fifteen thousand?
It'd be two hundred and four.
Okay, two hundred and forty, so you have thirty-four thousand.
So it'd be thirty-four thousand. It'd be thirty-four thousand, five forty-two, not that we, not that we count this.
I probably should, instead of having, I should have had my calculator up.
Okay, I, I just wanted to clarify that. Does anybody else have any questions, comments? Does somebody move that we approve the budget surrounding this issue?
Move to approve.
We have a motion from District Four, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion from District Two, any further discussion, comments? All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution requesting to close, a request for a proposal.
The amendment to the agenda? Item number eleven?
If I get on the right sheet. I'm sorry. Let's, okay. Sorry about that, Fred. You can stay up there because we're going to do this on the floor. District Two appointment to the library board.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a motion to appoint Mary Scroggs to the library board. If y'all remember, we had, a number of months back, we had the ladies of Mallard's Landing who had gotten involved with the, the library system, had even raised some money for the library system, been very beneficial to, to the county, and I, I think we've been well-served on the library board, but I, I did also want to recognize Mary for her service and, and make a motion, like I said, to appoint her to the library board for District Two.
Do we have a motion, District Two, do we have a second? Have a second from District Three, I mean, Four. Any further discussion, comments? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Now, we'll recognize the manager, resolution request and authorization to close a request for a proposal for a management and operational agreement for cotton field.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, Henry County issued a RFP number thirteen twenty-three SP on December twenty-eighth, two thousand and twelve. Further, the requests for clarification and questions were due to the county on or before January eighth, two thousand and thirteen. Those clarification answers were submitted, as being posted on the county's website, January fifteenth. Seal proposals were accepted until January twenty-third at three P.M. in the purchasing department. We did receive two proposals. Henry County, in the RFP, states that the county may reject all or part of the proposals within sixty days of the proposed opening. Resolution is attached to, here, now therefore be it resolved, the Henry County Board of Commissioners hereby reject all proposals for a management and operations agreement for Cotton Fields Golf Course.
Anybody have any questions or comment? Does somebody move that we adopt this resolution as published?
Move to approve.
Have a motion from District Four, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second from District Three, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So move.
Thank you.
Approval of the minutes, meetings in two thousand and twelve. Exhibit number fifteen, we got a meeting August twentieth, two thousand and twelve, October the fifteenth, two thousand and twelve, November the nineteenth, two thousand and twelve, December the seventeenth, two thousand and twelve, September the fourth, two thousand and twelve, November the sixth, two thousand and twelve, November the twentieth, two thousand and twelve. The meetings in two thousand and three, we only had one that we got the minutes ready, and that's January the eighth, two thousand and thirteen. This, in order to make this legal, you, you don't have to have had a ten, the meeting, to vote on the minutes. Needless to say, we only got two people up here, or maybe we had three, that obviously attended these meetings in twelve. So if we, if it went three to three, then we do nothing. So I'm, I will vote in favor of approving all these minutes, even though I didn't attend, just to get it on a legal status. So if somebody would move that we approve these minutes, unless the ones that were here during that timeframe have some amendments, then if somebody would approve those minutes...
I just have one, one question.
Because I, let me tell you, I was going to ask, because I wasn't at the November nineteenth meeting, so we can't approve these even if we weren't present, okay?
Yes, Robert's rules allows members who are not present to still vote on the minutes.
Otherwise, we'll never have a bona fide certified copy of the minutes if, if we don't exercise that Robert's rules of order. If you don't feel comfortable, just three of y'all that was here will vote on it, I will vote if you don't feel comfortable. We need to get at least four votes. So if somebody would move to approve these?
Some move.
Have a move from District Five, do we have a second? Have a second from District Four, all in favor, raise your right hand. Do we have anybody signed up for public comments today? Okay. Is any of the Commissioners have any comments? I do not have any comments. Yes, sir?
I received a number of calls over the past week, because I know last week, there was an article that ran in the Daily Herald that listed, one of the, part of the purpose for the executive session was that I was under potential litigation. That statement was actually incorrect, and I just wanted to kind of correct the record, because I received, like I said, a number of calls from people in the community who were concerned about me, and I appreciate your thoughts, but I assure you that as far as I know, there's no legal action facing me. I will tell you that because of this, this is one of the concerns I have about executive session, is that, you know, in, in light of trying to be as transparent as government should be, in the near term, I'd like to us to move towards not having executive session, just because this is one of the concerns that you can have, is go into executive session and then have quotes and statements made that, that are wrong and an error and, and cause issues.
I would concur, it indicated that I had made that statement, and, and I, I don't recall making that statement. If I did, it's an error, because there has never, ever, ever been any acquisitions of the distinguished commission from District Two or any other district that was involved in any legal issues. Does anybody else have any comments? Yes, sir?
I would like to, this, this comment is to commend Locust Grove High School. They have accepted the challenge to be a labor-ready force out of a hundred and sixty-eight high schools in the state of Georgia. That's a good challenge, and I mean, I, you know, with our new industrial arts-type school, it's going to be down that way, and to have Locust Grove step up to the plate and do it, I'd like to commend the school board for making that decision. That's something we're going to need if we're going to move forward with our economic movement. So I know that Brian's been well-involved in a lot of that, and if he'd like to chime in, that's fine, but I, I did notice that they had done that, and I thought that was a, and I thought, I think, I feel very strongly that that's a, a good move for Henry County to get us in that labor-ready force, so that when we do have businesses come to Henry County, we're going to have some people that can step up and take those jobs.
Yeah, and I think Commissioner Bowman is exactly right. I mean, one of the things I'm, I'm proud of is that part of the economics and education task force was all of Henry County being a work-ready community. We're blessed to have good leadership. I mean, that groundbreaking, we went to a number of weeks back, all you can say is wow. So I echo your congratulations, as well as just recognizing the commitment of the school system.
Anybody else like to make a comment? If not, we have a comment from the county manager?
No, sir.
And then the county attorney?
No, sir.
They're coming, meetings Tuesday, February the nineteenth at six thirty P.M., it'll be a regular board meeting. Tuesday, March the fifth, nine o'clock A.M., and Tuesday, March the nineteenth, at six thirty P.M., regular meeting. For record, with the county attorney, Lisa Kine, has to identify the items that will be discussed in executive session to the extent that the law allows.
Yes, sir. Items for executive session are pending and threatening, threatened litigation and property acquisition as it pertains to right-of-way for sploß-related transportation projects.
Okay. Litigated items, and I, I just want to make a comment that future acquisition of real estate does not mean that we are buying something other than right-of-way. In this particular case, I think it's limited to two roads. One, one is a widening of Fairview Road and...
Camp Ground Road extension.
Okay. So it would be limited to that. Having said that, does somebody move we're going to executive session?
Some move.
Have a motion going to executive session, the District Two, do we have a second?
One District Two.
Sir?
Five.
Five, have a second?
Seven.
Oh, District Five approved it. We have a second from District Four. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor, raise your right hand. We're going to executive session and, and I...
You mean this, all opposed?
All, all opposed. Okay, I'm sorry. Just, just for a timeframe, how many right-aways will we be discussing?
There are about nine to ten right-of-way acquisitions.
How many?
Nine to ten separate parcels.
Okay.
And there are three litigated matters.
Three litigated?
Pending litigated matters, yes, sir.
Okay, so that's, that kind of gives the audience a, a little preview as to how long we may be back there, and I, you guess as good as I was. We're going back into session, that takes, I think, a, a motion to go back into public session. Do I hear we move to go back in public session? We have a motion from District Five. Have a second, District Four, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, no, same sign. Okay. There will be some additional approvals, and I think the first thing on the agenda that we need to amend the agenda to add certain things. The first one would be Brandon Mitchell versus Henry County. Now, that would be a settlement agreement.
Yes, sir. If I, if you couldn't indulge me, Mr. Chairman and board members, I would ask the board to approve a motion to approve a settlement agreement with former county employee Brandon Mitchell in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars in satisfaction of a pending EEOC claim filed by Mr. Mitchell arising out of a failure to promote in the Henry County Fire Department.
Okay, I would entertain a motion for somebody to move that in the public necessity that we add this item to the agenda. We have a motion from District Five, second from District One. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Now, I would entertain a motion to approve what counsel has just suggested that we do.
The settlement agreement outlining the principal terms that I've just described.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion from District Four, second by District Five. Do we have any comments or questions? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Okay, next, if you'll present the next item.
Um, the next item, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that the board amend out of public necessity a motion to approve a six-day moratorium on ground signs, on the application, receipt, and processing of ground signs in Henry County.
Move to approve.
Well, we, we need to have a motion out of public necessity to add this to the agenda.
Yeah, that's right, I apologize, I went too quick on that.
We have a motion from District Four to amend the agenda to add this item out of public necessity. We have a second from District Five. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, no, same sign. Now, basically, this ordinance that you had recommended is, the bottom line would be a moratorium on signs for sixty days, is that right?
Ground signs, yes, sir. Temporary wall signs are excluded from the moratorium, but this will be a sixty-day moratorium on ground signs.
Beginning in February the fifth?
Yes, sir.
That's today, sixty days.
Yes, sir.
Okay, does somebody move that we adopt this ordinance as published?
I move that we adopt it, Mr. Chair.
So we have a motion by District Four, second by District Five, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate, raise your right hand. All opposed, no, same sign. So move. Now, we move into, I guess you'd call, would you identify this?
Property acquisition matters, Mr. Chairman.
Why don't we do this? Why don't somebody move that we add right-of-way acquisition surrounding Camp Ground Road extension out of public necessity?
I actually have it in print form.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you'd like for me to move forward with it, I'd be more than happy to, if it was given to me by the county.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, I didn't realize we have that in written form.
That's quite all right, it's no problem. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to approve a resolution to authorize the acquisition of zero point one five acres of right-of-way, more or less, zero point one two three acres of permanent easement, more or less, in landlots fifty, seventy-nine, and eighty in the sixth district, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA section thirty-two, three, dash, four, through section thirty-two, dash, three, dash, nineteen.
And Mr. Chairman, I will add to that, that the property, the parcel ID number for that property is zero seven one, A is in alpha, zero one, zero zero four eight, and it's located on Jolicoe Road.
Do I hear a second?
Seven.
Have a second from District Five, any further discussion? I think what we need to do is we need to vote on this motion, then we need to go back, and he has to have an amendment, because we're voting on the original, and it didn't include what you said other than what you said.
Well, I, I think, you voted on it before I, before I said it, so it will be necessarily included, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so you're saying what you just indicated is included?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody agree with that? Okay. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, no, same sign. Now, do you have a written for Fairview Road, or is that...
Mr. Chairman, if I could, there are so, so many for Fairview Road. If I could offer up this suggestion, what I would like to do is make a motion, the board approve a motion to amend the agenda and authorize acquisition of several properties... approve a motion to amend the agenda and authorize acquisition of several properties in connection with the SPOSS III Fairview Road widening project by negotiated contract on my way of condemnation pursuant to OCGA 32-3-4 through 32-3-19, and have that as the principal motion, if I could, go down serially with each parcel for the board's approval with that blanket request.
Does somebody move that we amend the agenda out of public necessity to address the issue as quoted by counsel?
So move.
We have a motion from District Five, second by District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Now, if somebody would move to make a motion?
Yes, sir. I would ask a motion to approve property located at 101 through 129 Fairview Road, Ellinwood, Georgia, parcel ID 02504001001. The county will acquire .07 acre, 87 acres of right-of-way, more or less, .207 acres of temporary easement, more or less, and .027 acres of driveway easement, more or less, in the amount of the acquisition, $20,300.
Just for record, is that, have we described this land in such a way to where a citizen can get in their car and go out and look at this mini parcel of land if they so desire?
I have. I've given the physical address, and I've given the tax parcel ID number, so that someone can look at it on the website.
Thank you so much. Does somebody move in that direction?
Do we have to move one at a time, or can we just have the county attorney go through it and just approve all of it at the same time?
If you, if you don't mind going through them, approve them one at a time, and I'll go through, and just clean it for the record.
We have a motion from District Five, second from District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign.
The next, the next acquisition is property located at 282 Fairview Road, Ellinwood, Georgia, parcel ID number 02501030000. The county is to acquire .007 acres of right-of-way, more or less, .01 acres of temporary easement, more or less, .030 acres of driveway easement, more or less, in the amount of $5,614.
Somebody move in that direction? We have a motion from Distinguished Commission from District Five, second by Distinguished Commission from District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor say correction. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, no, so move.
The next parcel is land located at 270 Fairview Road, Ellinwood, Georgia, parcel ID number 02501030001. The property to be acquired, .019 acres of right-of-way, more or less, .027 acres of temporary easement, more or less, .006 acres of driveway easement, more or less, in the amount of $11,660.
So move.
Do we have a motion from District Five?
Second.
Have a second from District Three? Any further discussion? All in favor, uplift of your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
The next parcel is from property located at 242 through 262 Fairview Road, Ellinwood, Georgia, parcel ID number 02501031000. The acquisition is .037 acres of right-of-way, more or less, .032 acres of temporary easement, more or less, .05 acres of driveway easement, more or less. The total amount of acquisition, $24,643.
So move.
Have a motion from District Five. They hear a second?
Second.
Second from District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
The next parcel is located at 320 Fairview Road, Ellinwood, Georgia, parcel ID number The property to be acquired is .03 acres of right-of-way, more or less, .026 acres of temporary easement, more or less, .044 acres of driveway easement, more or less. The amount, $22,919.
Have a motion from District Five. They hear a second?
Second.
Second by District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
The next parcel is from property located at 234 Fairview Road, Ellinwood, Georgia, parcel ID number 02501033002. The property to be acquired is .083 acres of right-of-way, more or less, .043 acres of temporary easement, more or less, and .044 acres of driveway easement, more or less, in the amount of $83,385.
So move.
Have a motion from District Five. Hear a second?
Second.
Second by District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, uplift of your right hand.
That concludes...
All opposed, same sign. Do you have anything else, ma'am?
No, that concludes the right-of-way acquisition.
Do you have any other business that legal counsel needs to address at this time?
No, sir. No, sir, I do not.
Does any other counsel, correction, does any other commission person have anything need to be discussed? We have a comment from the Distinguished County Clerk.
We need to approve the affidavit and resolution for executive session.
Okay. Does somebody move in that direction?
So move.
We, we just moved that we have the affidavit that approved executive session.
I can do it with...
Okay, we have, we have a motion from District Five. We have a second from District Four. Any further discussion? All in favors, raise your right hand. All opposed, no, so move. That's a good catch, Madam Clerk, thank you so much. Anybody else has anything need to be discussed? Somebody move to adjourn?
So move.
We have a motion from District Three, second by District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, adjourn.